Good evening, everyone. It is six o'clock, so I will call to order the regular city council meeting of January 11th, 2021. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Benson?
Here.
Councilmember Farrell?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Markline?
Here.
Councilmember Williams?
Here.
Councilmember Wolf? Councilmember Wolf? Councilmember Conley?
Here. And I think Councilmember Wolf is trying to connect, so we'll continue to try to help him do that. We will go on, though. Item three is consideration and action on a proposed resolution recognizing John Wickham for his 31 years of service to the City of Janesville. File Resolution Number 2021-1832. Will the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution Number 2021-1832. Whereas John Wickham retired from City of Janesville employment after having diligently served the people of the City of Janesville and the community for more than 31 years, retiring as the operations director in the Public Works Department. And whereas during John Wickham's employment with the City of Janesville, he provided exemplary professional service and demonstrated conscientious devotion to the duties of his position, which he performed with skill and ability, sincerity, honesty, and dedication. And whereas John Wickham began his employment with the City of Janesville as a recycling coordinator in June 1989. And whereas in the course of his employment, John also held the positions of solid waste director and operations director, which is the position he held until his retirement. And whereas John Wickham was recognized as a lead paddler and presented with a rotating paddle in August 2015 and again in September 2019. And whereas John Wickham received the Samuel A. Greeley Service Award for local government services from the State Chapter of the American Public Works Association in 2020. And whereas it is desired that such commendable service to the City of Janesville be properly recognized, now therefore be it resolved that the people of the City of Janesville through the city council express their grateful appreciation to John Wickham for his more than 31 years of loyal public service.
Thank you. Councilmember Williams?
I move that we adopt File Resolution Number 2021-1832, recognizing John Wickham for his, was it 31 years of service to the City of Janesville?
Thank you. Councilmember Markline?
I would proudly second that motion.
Okay. Councilmember Williams, anything further?
Just going to miss John working for the city. He's been a dedicated employee. I've known him now through my whole council experience, and he's always rose to the occasion, whether it's been a severe storm or wind damage and all kinds of things. And he's going to be really missed by the citizens and by the city council. So thank you for his service. Enjoy your retirement, John.
Thank you. Councilmember Markline?
Yes, I fondly remember working for the city. And we'll remember when the dump was in a mess of hurt for financial reasons. John is the one who came forward with a plan on how to pull it out and let council listen to him and just told him to run it like a business, and he did. And the dump right now, to his credit, is in the black and looking good. So hats off to John.
Thank you. Any other council member wishing to comment? Well, I also want to thank John for his 31 years of service, and I think he has always served in good humor, even when there was a lot to do. He's someone who always has a positive outlook and made a very large impact on our community. So, John, thank you very much, and we wish you all the best in your retirement. With that, we have a motion by Councilmember Williams, second by Councilmember Markline to adopt File Resolution Number 2021-1832. Will the clerk please call the vote?
Councilmember Benson?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrell?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Markline?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Wolf?
Aye.
Council President Conley?
Yes. That motion passes unanimously, and I believe John is on the call tonight. If you wish to say a few words, we'd love to hear from you.
Council President Conley, this is Mark Freitag. I don't see John on the call, so obviously something has gotten in the way of him participating, but he was intending to be here.
Well, if he does pop in at a later time, Dave, if you'd let us know, we'd certainly circle back to him.
Will do.
Okay, thank you. Item four are public comments on items on the agenda not requiring a public hearing and on matters which can be affected by council action. All of our public comments are being received in writing. Did we receive any in writing?
Yes, we've got two comments.
Okay, please read them.
The first is from Andrea Briarmoon, 309 South Locust Street. City council persons, if you can do virtual, so can citizens. They can sign in, turn on their mic when it is their turn to speak. There is no reason to drastically cut the polling places, so very wrong. We used to walk to our neighborhood school to vote. Fresh air, visit with neighbors, safest school day of the year. During presidential election, 50 volunteers and the National Guard were told we weren't needed. Ridiculous. Second comment is from Richard Owens, 303 Forest Park Boulevard. Janesville City Council members, the cooperative agreement between Janesville-Milton and Milton Township may have merit. However, it is hoped that such an agreement will not increase fees as opposed to tax assessments for any of the communities involved. There are a number of constituents who are working fewer hours or none at all, and any increase in fees for services may be hard to bear. I fully support our fire and police service and other essential municipal services and hope you would be reluctant to add another fee to those already paid. If you do increase fees, please keep them very low and have them permanently cease no more than three years after implementation. And that is all the comments we received.
Okay, thank you. Item number five is the city manager update. Mr. Freitag?
Good evening, council members. Happy New Year to everyone, and good evening, members of the community that are tuned in. We've got the slides pulled up, and so we'll start with some things to know. First of all, if you remember, this past fall, our Recreation Division sponsored a story walk program out at Riverside Park, and then they continued that in the town square. And, you know, the community received it quite well, very excited. And so we're pleased to announce that Recreation Division has received a $6,000 grant to purchase and install permanent story walk pedestals along the Beeman Trail out at the Arboretum. And so we'll partner up with the school district and Hedberg Public Library, which will allow year-round stories to be displayed that focus on outdoors nature. And so just a win for the community and certainly for our children. Next item on there is the Bicycle Friendly Community Award. So in December, the city received notification that we've been awarded a bronze-level Bicycle Friendly Community Award by the League of American Bicyclists. And, you know, I really think that the city has, you know, made some major strides in the past several decades to become more bike-friendly, certainly looking at bike infrastructure, educating the community on bike programs, holding events to promote biking. Certainly, the Grand Prix in our downtown is a good example of that, and establishing pro-bike policies. And so we're excited about this award, recognizing those hard efforts by members of the community and certainly our city staff. Next slide. Just an update on Routes to Recovery. If you remember, the city submitted its first submission on the state funding program this past July, and we received our full allocation of just over $1 million later in the summer, early fall. Here in November, the state had funds remaining in that account and said, if you've got any qualifying expenses that you'd like to apply for, please do. And so we did. We received an update that we would be reimbursed an additional $109,000 and some change to cover COVID expenses. And so that, you know, essentially comes up to the total amount of $1,140,714.21 that the city has received from that Routes to Recovery program to reimburse expenses that we've had to outlay as a result of COVID-19. Another good news story is that the Provider Relief Fund, coming out of the CARES Act, provided the city with $119,000 to offset lost ambulance transport revenue due to COVID-19. So that's a good news story. And then I think we've received a total of three, maybe more, chunks of money through our Community Development Block grant funding. And some of that money has been allocated by the Community Development Authority to Echo in the tune of $75,000 and $27,000 to House of Mercy for emergency shelter relief. And so especially in this time of year when the temperatures are extremely cold, having some additional hotel vouchers at both Echo and House of Mercy is certainly great for those in need, specifically our homeless. And so good news from a funding perspective there. Next slide. If folks are interested, you can certainly go to our city website, and we've updated the trash and recycling calendar and the maps, and so those are fresh, updated for 2021. If you're curious about learning more, I encourage you to visit our city website for the trash and recycling update. So please do that. Next slide. Some upcoming events. Today, pavilion reservations are open to non-residents, and so that's part of our standard reservation program. January 18th, Monday, Martin Luther King Jr. holiday. Most city facilities are open. January 28th is a state of the city address. We're going to do a virtual event, so there won't be any in-person event. We will tape that program and hit broadcast both on our city website and on JATV and YouTube at 6:00 on the evening of the 28th. February 16th, spring primary election. Polls are open from 7:00 to 8:00. And the spring election coming up in April 6th, again, polls open from 7:00 to 8:00, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Next slide. As always, a lot of great information out there. I encourage folks to certainly visit our City of Janesville website, which is listed at the bottom there, www.janesvillewi.gov. If you want us to push information to you, we're happy to do that, but you've got to give us your email list or address first. And so if you go to that link, our city website slash email lists, you give us your email address, and we will push information to you. And I would tell you that that is certainly useful this time of year with snow emergencies being declared, winter weather advisories being published. And so it's just a good way to get information pushed by the city. You'll also receive press releases and other informational pushes that the city does. If you want to talk to us and, you know, either raise a concern, ask a question, ask for information, we're happy to have the conversation, please call us at 755-3000 or 755-3177. You can like us on Facebook, follow us on Twitter, receive emergency updates from the JPD via Nixle, you can connect with us on LinkedIn, and if you scan the QR code into your smartphone, it will take you to that email list signup sheet. So last slide. Pending any questions, that's all I have this evening.
Okay, thank you. Any council member have questions for city manager? Looks like Councilmember Farrell does.
Yes, thank you. A question for the city manager. I am a member of the CDA, and I was happy to see us be able to have these hotel vouchers for homeless people. I just want to clarify with you, city manager, and I think it's my understanding that all hotels have to, I don't want to use the word "have to," but we're expecting that every hotel will allow the use of these vouchers. In other words, what I'm trying to get at, I certainly hope and our homeless will not have to stay in some second-rate hotel during any cold spell or anything like that. Is that your understanding, that if they have these vouchers, and there is capacity at all these hotels right now, obviously we all know that, that they're not restricted to my understanding? Is that your understanding of that?
I don't have any knowledge of how Echo or House of Mercy apply those hotel vouchers and the coordination that they have with hotels. You know, our role simply is providing the funding to the local agencies. So I certainly agree with your concerns, and I would think that that would be the way that it runs, but I don't have any firsthand knowledge of that.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for the city manager? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda items, which are items 6 through 16. They will all be approved as read unless a council member wishes to discuss them further. So I'll read through them all. Item 6 is city council meeting minutes of the special city council meeting of December 9th, 2020, the regular city council meeting minutes of December 14th, 2020, and the closed session on December 14th, 2020 for approval only, not release. Item 7, consideration and action on the recommended license applications. Refer to the license agenda. Item 8, the November financial statements. Item 9, consideration and action on a proposed resolution authorizing the purchase of police and fire portable and mobile radios. File Resolution Number 2021-1843. Item 10, consideration and action on a proposed resolution authorizing the purchase of eight police squad vehicles and related equipment. File Resolution Number 2021-1842. Item 11, consideration and action to adopt revised council policy statement number 22, appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. Item 12, consideration and action on a proposed resolution proclaiming Monday, January 18th, 2021, as Martin Luther King Jr. Day in the City of Janesville. File Resolution Number 2021-1844. Item 13, consideration and action on a proposed resolution establishing a relocation order for the East Milwaukee Street and Randall Avenue and West Memorial Drive and North Washington Street. Highway Safety Improvement Program Projects. File Resolution Number 2021-1841. Item 14, discussion and action on a proposed resolution combining polling places for the February 16th, 2021, nonpartisan primary election. File Resolution Number 2021-1845. Item 15, consideration and action on a proposed resolution recognizing Ethan Jones for his 25 years of service to the City of Janesville. File Resolution Number 2021-1833. And item 16, consideration and action on addendum number one to the Janesville Fire Department's shared services agreement with Milton Township and the City of Milton. And I see Councilmember Farrell has his hand up.
Yes, I would like to have item 16 pulled off the consent agenda.
Okay.
Questions for Chief Rhodes and if Max Gagin is with it.
Okay, and Councilmember Williams?
That's also the item I wanted to hold.
Okay, great. Councilmember Farrell, why don't you start?
Yes, I want to read a little comment out of the local paper on, I believe it was February 20th of this year. It says, Milton Fire Department is in the midst of a staffing crisis due to a lack of volunteer firefighters, according to Chief Rhodes. Since December, there have been times when no one has been able to respond to calls to Milton, and Janesville staff needed to respond, according to Rhodes, which significantly lengthens the response time. I won't read the rest of the thing, but the point I'm trying to make, or I want to ask, is I understand that Milton, the City of Milton, is a problem because they have volunteer firefighters, and we're helping them out with this. I understand fire departments do that frequently. I guess, I don't see, I represent the city taxpayers here, Janesville taxpayers, not Milton taxpayers. I fail, unless Chief Rhodes can answer this, how does that benefit the City of Janesville taxpayers? You heard one public comment where somebody asked, they think, we're going to raise the fees because of this. So it's all well and good, you know, that we're helping Milton, but I have to represent the interests of our taxpayers. And frankly, I'm concerned these volunteer firefighters, someday, we're going to be on the hook for it. We're going to have to pay full-time wages, either using our staff there or hiring full-time firefighters in Milton. So I guess I see all advantages in this agreement being for the City of Milton. I don't see we reducing costs. I don't see us reducing our response times. I see occasionally we can use Milton equipment, which I would really be interested to know how many times that has happened maybe in the last year. So I don't want to, you know, have a major debate on this, but frankly, I have a hard time getting too enthusiastic about something. Yes, it's in your purview of being in fire management, it's a good idea, but in a broader sense for the City of Janesville, how does that, how is that a benefit to us? Can you answer that, Chief Rhodes?
Hello, Chief Rhodes.
Yes, good evening. Yes, I can't, hi, Ernie Rhodes, Fire Chief, City of Janesville, and the Milton Fire Department. So very good points, Mr. Farrell, that you made. And so the benefit of this agreement is, well, let me back up. We have always responded in mutual aid with the township and the City of Milton and the Milton Fire Department for many, many years. And so currently, we do have an auto aid agreement through automatic vehicle location, which sends the closest unit to a 911 call, which is what I think everybody wants us to do if you're having a life-threatening emergency. It doesn't matter what it says on the side of the truck. You want a fully-staffed, qualified crew to be there to assist you. So we've done that through basically erasing the boundaries between the City of Janesville and the City of Milton. They've responded into the City of Janesville, and I'm trying to go vaguely off memory, about 113 times last year. And, you know, once again, I'm just remembering that off of my memory. I can get you the exact number if you would like. And then also, the reciprocation is we also went and responded to assist Milton with our paramedic services and fire services. And it seemed to me, if my memory recalls, about 50 more times than what they came to help the City of Janesville. Because, you know, they do, they used to rely a lot on the paid-on-call volunteer fire service, but they're transitioning rapidly to paid-on-call, which means they have people in the station. For instance, today, they have four people that are assigned to the station to man the engine and/or the ambulance. It's the goal of that fire commission up there, to fully staff that fire station with full-time people in the transition away from the paid-on-call and the paid-on-premise model that they're currently using. So although that is correct, in the paper, when that was written, there were some concerns with staffing, and there was a plan to backfill the Milton station with an ambulance, but we were going to directly bill the Milton Fire Department for those services. So we are not underwriting the responses to the City of Milton. If there would be a full consolidation, the Milton Fire Department would still have to pay their fair, the fair amount of what it would cost for equipment and staffing, et cetera, et cetera. There would not be any burden on the taxpayers of Janesville. That would not be fair, and nobody would like that, including myself, which I live in the City of Janesville. So moving forward, what we're trying to do here is to functionally merge the fire departments together to take advantage of common standard operating guidelines, common responses, and then to be able to ebb and flow resources between the two fire departments. And this agreement does enhance that interoperability. There are definitely two distinctive fire departments right now, and as the chief of both, it is very difficult to manage both. Both require the same amount of energy, to be honest with you, and the time, and so it is my, at a minimum on the command staff level, to merge the command staffs, to take advantage of all the positions to leverage those together. And also currently, the Milton Fire Department pays the City of Janesville $55,000 for the services of Fire Chief at this time. So I hope I answered your question, sir.
I'll just have, I have a few follow-up questions of that. Are we proposing like your staff, like your lieutenants and so on, that they would participate? Yes, Milton is paying for your part of your salary. Are we going to utilize our other office staff, you know, like lieutenants and that, and commanders in Milton? Are they going to be physically there? Are they going to be just kind of interchangeably going to be supervising Milton personnel as well as ours?
No, sir. At this time, the lieutenants will not be assigned to the station. Once again, there are still going to be two distinct fire departments, and the Milton Fire Department is still going to have to pay the wages and has the responsibility of staffing. It is more or less on an operational perspective of merging those, but we would not assign a lieutenant up there. The only way a lieutenant would be up there, if they would respond to a call for help in a Janesville engine. On occasion, the battalion chief also responds up there to fire, but we also have Janesville units there, too, for that supervisory capacity.
Okay. Is there any prospects or there been discussion of, I've heard this in the past, of a new fire station, if so, a Fire Station 6? And if you've heard anything about that, chief, can you mention of where that could be located, in my opinion, if that's going to equally benefit the citizens of Milton? I don't know why we should have to fund the whole facility like that. What's your comment on that? Have you heard anything about that? Is it going to be located right on the boundary or close to Milton?
So prior to me becoming the Fire Chief for the City of Janesville, there was a location established just north of the city, inside the city limits, to service the southern side of Milton and then the north side of Janesville. At this time, the Milton Fire Commission is considering relocating their current fire station and building a newer fire station, which would actually pull that fire station about a mile closer to the City of Janesville. And if I were to relocate that site for Station 6, I would probably relocate that in a better location between, somewhere in the City of Janesville, like the south side, because if that station is moved and we're using this functional merger, and we're also taking advantage of technology, sending the closest vehicle for a 911 call, then we've kind of really enhanced service to the citizens of Janesville on the north side, and conversely, we've supported the citizens of Milton, too.
Okay, thanks, Chief Rhodes. That's all I have at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Farrell? Councilmember Williams?
Yes, I had a couple of questions and concerns, and I sent them to the city manager, and in the meantime, the city attorney and the chief got back to me on it, but I just thought I would go over these with the rest of the council. In this addendum, number 5 says, Fire Chief means the Janesville Fire Chief. uh, number five says, uh, Fire Chief means the Janesville Fire Chief. Um, and thought added to that, and it was agreed upon, I believe, um, uh, to also state, or his or her designate. Because, uh, I know, uh, the, the chief hopefully, uh, will take a vacation from time to time. And, uh, I just thought that it would be best that, um, uh, that we have somebody else that could be put in charge. But according to this, uh, addendum and the memorandum of understanding, it seems to, uh, only refer to the Fire Chief. So that was one proposal. Um, and to put it in the rest of the agreement are, in the addendum. Um, and also, um, under the memorandum of understanding, if we could put in this addendum, um, under number seven, uh, it talks about the Fire Chief will respond to emergency incidences and, um, and is responsible to assist in the mitigation of those emergency events. I thought it would be better to, um, somehow clarify, um, what those, what an emergency incident is, because I'm assuming, you know, some people might think anytime 911 is called, uh, whether it be burnt toast at a, at a nursing home or someone having a heart attack. And I don't think that we, uh, if you read this literally, um, I don't think that, uh, you know, the chief, uh, Fire Chief needs to respond to each of those events. So, uh, I think that needs to be clarified somewhat. Um, and if, uh, the chief may have any comments on that, I'd appreciate them.
Chief Rhodes?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Uh, yes, Mr. Williams, uh, as I, uh, stated in the email, that it's fairly normal and customary to appoint or delegate duties as Fire, as the Fire Chief deems, uh, when we go on vacation. So, or, or any other emergency. So when a, an emergency occurs in either community, I'm always listening to the radio, but I do treat those calls and, uh, I can pick and choose which call I go to, which it may be, um, you know, significant life hazard or threat or a significant property loss. And I do, I do do that. Um, it did not, I guess your point made did not, uh, appear in either the initial shared services or the addendum, because, uh, you know, I think it's just common practice across the United States to where the chief does delegate those duties and authorities. And that is, that is the expectation. So, um, I, I can certainly, uh, discuss it more if you'd like.
Well, you know, I, it may be common knowledge, but you know, when it's written in an agreement and we're voting on accepting that, um, I would feel better that, you know, we had it in there as opposed to saying that, you know, the agreement to me says that you're the, the only one. Um, and I trust you 100%. But, uh, I guess I would like it in the agreement that you have that ability. Uh, I don't want to see somebody maybe on the other side or somewhere down the road say, well, your chief didn't do this and he says he was going to, to do this. Um, I, I just think that it should say that there's, you know, that you have the ability to designate someone else to do that. Um, and I think that the, uh, needs to be clarified as far as what, when you need to really go to an event in Milton. Um, uh, it may be standard practice in, in the fire service, but I, as a council member, I'm not familiar with that. So that's why I would rather have it in writing.
So, um, Councilmember Williams, we have Councilmember Wolf who wishes to speak as well. So I think I'll let him speak and then I'll circle back to you about that. Okay?
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Councilmember Wolf.
So before I make my comment, uh, back to Councilmember Williams's second point, my point seven is different than his point seven. So maybe I was looking at the wrong thing.
I was looking in the memorandum of understanding.
The addendum? Oh, the memorandum of understanding from October 1st, 2017?
Correct.
Okay. That's not on the table tonight. Is that correct? Just this addendum is?
No.
Correct.
But this addendum is for that memorandum of understanding. So I'm assuming that could be added to the addendum.
So you want to change the original agreement is what you're saying, Councilmember Williams?
That's kind of what this, this addendum one that we're discussing is not only an addendum, but it's also an amendment. Uh, it's actually two things. So it is amending the original memorandum of understanding and it is also an addendum to the memorandum of understanding.
So is the city attorney available to talk to this?
Yes. Sounds like a good idea. We can add it to the addendum, which would act as an amendment to the original agreement. It's not a problem. We'll just pencil it in, put initials and then, uh, uh, the Milton Fire District can go along with that. It's a good idea. It just makes it clear and we can throw it in.
So everyone would have to agree to that amendment? Right. Okay. All right. Thank you, Councilmember Wolf. What else did you have?
Well, I do have something else, but I guess let's stay on this point. Then could Councilmember Williams restate what he wants the amendment to be? Because I was reading section seven to the addendum, so I was not tracking. So if he would please do that, I'd appreciate it.
In the addendum, item number five states the Fire Chief means the Janesville Fire Chief. And put in there, or his, his or her designate, and then add that to wherever it refers to, such as in, um, there's a, I'm trying to find another place where it kind of refers to it. Um, the
Anywhere it refers to Fire Chief, you wish to say Fire Chief and his or her designate?
Correct. And also in the, to add to the addendum, the, uh, changing item number or adding to, to item number, uh, making addendum to item number seven of the memorandum of understanding to make it more clear on which events or incidences that the chief has to respond to. And one of those that was suggested, or a couple of those that were suggested by the chief in his email to me earlier were, uh, something that has great property loss, like a major fire or, uh, an incident where there may be, uh, loss of life. Instead of just saying an emergency incident, because to me, I think that could mean just about anything. And I don't think we need the, the Fire Chief to be running up to Milton every time there's a, an emergency incident or event. Um, I think it only needs to be when there's a loss of life, a major or a major incident as far as property damage.
Okay. So I'm hearing actually probably two motions then. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, Wald, but it sounds to me like we would need a motion to amend the original MOU and then a motion to amend the addendum, number one.
No, you can combine it as an amendment of this addendum to include all this stuff, because it'll be this addendum that'll amend the original agreement.
Okay. All right. So Councilmember Williams, is that a motion that you wish to make?
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve.
I think you're making, you're making a motion to amend something, right? You're changing what we have in front of us?
Well, I was, Wald, is it possible for me to make a motion to approve the addendum, number one, with the addition of the, uh, item to clarify his or her designate and to clarify what an emergency event and incident is?
Yes.
Okay. If that's okay with the council president, um, I'll make a motion to approve addendum number one to the Janesville Fire Department's Shared Services Agreement with Milton Township and the city of Milton, um, as written and including, um, the addition of, uh, Fire Chief means the Janesville Fire Chief or his or her designate. And then to, um, uh, added a men, an amendment to item number seven of the agreement, uh, stating that the Fire Chief will respond to emergency incidences and respond, responsible in the mitigation of emergency events that include loss of life or serious loss of property.
Okay. And is there a second? Hearing no second, your motion fails. Uh, Councilmember Wolf?
I move approval of addendum number one to the Janesville Fire Department's Shared Services Agreement with Milton Township and the city of Milton.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Councilmember
Councilmember Mark Thank you. Councilmember Wolf, anything further?
Nothing further.
Councilmember Markline, anything further from you?
No.
Councilmember Benson?
Yeah, I just wondered if it makes sense, if there is something that could be clarified that Wald said would maybe improve it, if it makes sense sending this back to staff. I, I'm not sure if it makes, personally, I don't know if it makes a huge difference either way, but I do see Councilmember Williams' points and I think they might improve it. So, um, I might've actually seconded it if I could have unmuted it more quickly. So I think, um, I don't know, does it make sense to send this back to staff? And I'll defer to you, council president.
Well, I'm sorry, I, am I hearing you say you wanted, did you want to second Councilmember Williams' motion, but weren't able to, to do so?
Correct, I did. But I know that I, I mean, it was, I hit the mute button and it kind of froze.
Oh, yeah, technology. Um, well, uh, city attorney, what are my options?
Uh, you got the current motion. That's all you can look at.
All right. Thank you for that. So, um, I guess we'll see how the vote plays out. Councilmember Benson, um, if, okay. All right. So we have a motion by Councilmember Wolf and second by Councilmember Markline to approve addendum number one to the Janesville Fire Department's Shared Services Agreement with Milton Township and the city of Milton. Any other council member have a comment or question before I call the vote? Councilmember Farrell?
Yes, I have, uh, a, a accounting question for Max Gagan. Um, the 55, or 55,000 were reimbursed by Milton for Chief Rhodes' salary. Where is that? Can you clarify where that, where is that budgeted? Is that just a net credit against salaries or is that in a separate item? Uh, I guess I'm just a little confused where that appears.
Yep. Uh, this is Max Gagan, Finance Director. Uh, so the Milton, uh, Milton Fire District's Shared Services payment is budgeted as revenue in our general fund, which then offsets costs related to Chief Rhodes' salary in bonus.
Okay. So it's just a revenue item?
Correct.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Last call for comments or questions. Seeing none, will the clerk please call the vote?
Councilmember Benson?
Uh, I will vote yes.
Councilmember Farrell?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Markline?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
No.
Councilmember Wolf?
Aye.
Council President Conley?
Yes. So that motion passes with Councilmember Williams opposed, Benson, Farrell, Johnson, Markline, Wolf and Conley, um, in the affirmative. I also want to mention that all items number 16, or excuse me, six through 15 were approved under consent for this conversation. All right. Thanks, everyone. We have no old business this evening. First item under new business is consideration and action to award contract for bid schedule F-2020, C-2020-17 Ice Age Trail Bridge Replacement, C-2020-18 Utility Structure Rehabilitation and Replacement, C-2020-19 Secondary Treatment Polymer, uh, Dosing System. And we do have Assistant City Engineer Brad Rents here, if council members would like a presentation. Anyone want the presentation?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Welcome, Brad.
Thank you, Council President Conley. Uh, good evening, council members. Brad Rents with the Department of Public Works. Um, here to give you some, um, background information and recommend award of contracts under bid schedule F. This is the last bid schedule that is presented in the, the 2020 calendar year. Next slide, please. So the three contractor, contracts I have listed here is 2020-17. This is the Ice Age Trail Bridge Replacement Project. This is, um, an existing bridge being replaced on city parkland just south of Palmer Drive, um, just south of Rotary Gardens area. So, uh, this project consists of removal of the existing timber structure and replacement or installation of a new 12-foot wide by 70-foot bridge. This bridge would have steel girders. It's a, um, it's a, it would have steel girders, wood deck, railing and brand-new concrete abutments. And this would be a prefabricated bridge kit. For 2020-18 Utility Structure Rehabilitation and Replacement, this is a, a typical annual contract that we put out for bid. It's part of the street rehabilitation project in advance of rehabilitating the street. We get out there, take a look at the structures and, uh, determine which ones need replacement and rehabilitation. This contract would take care of just shy of 400 structures, those being sanitary sewer, water and storm sewer structures. And lastly, 2020-19, this is the secondary treatment polymer dosing system. Uh, it's, it's an improvement project out at the wastewater treatment plant. Basically, what this project will do is, is go, it's going to reduce the amount of phosphorus that's discharged from the wastewater treatment plant. It's part of a need to comply with new DNR permitting requirements to reduce that phosphorus. So this system is going to take care of that. Next slide, please. So with that, I'm recommending award of all three contracts. The first one, 2020-17, the Ice Age Trail Bridge. We had six qualified contractors that submitted bids for this project. Sunrise Construction was a low bidder at $65,475, uh, well below the engineering estimate, which is around 106,000. The next one is 2020-18, the utility replacement rehabilitation contract. We had four qualified contractors that submitted bids. Beyond Limestone was the low bidder at, uh, $1,458,940. This, uh, was just below our engineering estimate at 1.46 million. And then lastly, the 2020-19, the secondary treatment polymer dosing system at, at the wastewater treatment plant. We had two qualified bidders for that project. Stop Construction was the low bidder at 867,000. And, um, this, their bid was very close to the engineering estimate, which was at, um, $860,000. So, um, $7,000 difference, which is pretty good for a system like this. So with that, uh, recommending award of all three and would be happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Thank you. Any council member with questions? Councilmember Farrell?
Uh, yes, I have a question on, uh, the bid 2020-18. Uh, Brad, don't we, uh, correct Brad, don't we, correct me if I'm wrong, don't we, haven't we related these number of units to like number of miles? I guess I'm a little confused, I thought, you know, like, we look at our, our street replacement in terms of miles. Is there any way of converting that to miles, or is it just not a practical thing to do it that way?
I guess the best way I could describe it is, you know, we rehabilitate approximately 12 miles a year on our streets, and so part of that rehabilitation, we look at 12 miles of structures on those streets. And based on our inspection of those structures, we've determined, you know, just shy of 400 need to be rehabilitated or replaced. You know, so we, we try to take care of any, any bad structures before we put a new lift of asphalt on those roads.
Okay.
So, go ahead.
So we just, oh, okay, so what, this kind of ties in with the rehab on the, the streets then, is what you're saying?
Exactly. It's directly tied to what we're rehabilitating.
Directly tied to it.
Yep.
Okay. Also, is there anything, you know, you, on the, the streets, we have the Paser ratings, you know, like good, bad, and poor, et cetera? Is it just automatically assumed that anytime we do additional miles that we have to replace all this, or do we in fact know these are in bad condition, or is it just, we automatically have to replace them when we do streets?
Great question. So we get the list of streets that we're planning to rehabilitate the upcoming year, and so prior to that, we physically go out there and look into those structures, and we have a system that we, we rate them. We have different characteristics and conditions that we assess them by, and then when we come back in the office, we take a look at that and then make decisions on whether they need to be just rehabbed, so only a portion may need to be fixed, or we have to completely replace the entire thing.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? I do have one for you, Brad, and that's under number 17's bid, under the anticipated project cost. One of them is engineering and force account. What does force account mean?
Force account, there's, there's a little bit of work being done by the Parks Department to do some tree clearing and, and other areas, just in preparation to try to get ready for that project. There's some slope stabilization work that has to happen, and so they're going to help us out with a little bit of that. Of course, there's a little bit of engineering that comes in, you know, with this type of project, so.
Okay, so it's just extra work in preparation for the replacement, basically?
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you. That was my only question. I don't see any other hands raised. What are the wishes of the council? Councilmember Markline?
I would make the motion to approve all the bids.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second, Councilmember Farrell.
Thank you. Councilmember Markline, anything further?
No, they were very competitive bids, so I think the city will be well-served. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Farrell?
No, I don't have anything. I, being a bike rider in that area, I'm glad to see that bridge replacement. That's really a great idea. We've got to make sure that these bridges are 100% safe, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council member wishing to comment? All right, motion by Councilmember Markline, and a second by Councilmember Farrell to approve bid schedule F, including C-2020-17, C-2020-18, and C-2020-19. Will the clerk please call the vote?
Councilmember Benson?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrell?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Markline?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Wolf?
Aye.
Council President Conley?
Yes. So that motion passes unanimously. Any member two or common council announcements? Do any council members have an announcement? All right, then is there a motion to adjourn?
So... Markline?
Yeah, a motion by Councilmember Markline, second by Councilmember Williams to adjourn. Will the clerk please call the vote?
Councilmember Benson?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrell?
Yes.
Councilmember Markline?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Wolf?
Aye.
Council President Conley?
Yes. And Councilmember Johnson?
Yes. Thank you.
All right, that passes unanimously as well. Thanks, everyone. Enjoy the rest of your evening.